Boy, it's nice to see a full crowd here on Veterans Day. Would you join me, please, to stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Tonight, we have some special recognitions. The Board of Education is recommending an outstanding group of Parkway employees who have served our country and the military. Also recognizing Parkway students and two of our National Blue Ribbon Schools that just got back from Washington where they were honored. We're also honoring 50 students tonight who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement in the National Merit Scholarship Program. It's just phenomenal and fantastic. And in addition to them, two more students from the Stars Program. So a wonderful night to recognize so many of these students and their parents. But first, I'd like to introduce Paul Tandy. He's our Chief Communications Officer. He will introduce Parkway employees who have served in the military. Paul served 22 years in the Army himself, both on active duty and in the Reserve Components. He has been deployed overseas three times, most recently to Baghdad, Iraq, in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, where he was awarded the Bronze Star Medal. Mr. Tandy retired from military service in 2008 at the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. Paul, we thank you for your service and ask you to come to the podium.
Thank you, President Jacob. That was very nice. I appreciate the opportunity to do this tonight. As I know a lot of you did, we went around today to a lot of the ceremonies at our schools. And if you've been on our Facebook page, if you haven't, you ought to go and see some of the pictures and videos that have been submitted. They're just fantastic. They've been such heartwarming activities and I encourage you to do that. We have a number of employees in Parkway who have served in the Armed Forces. In fact, through this process, we've learned there's close to 100. A lot of them, though, were honored today. And as the ceremonies that I went to, they were there and they were being honored, which is fantastic. So a lot of them are not here tonight and probably because they were already participating in ceremonies today. But I would like to honor some of our very important staff members who are veterans of the Armed Forces. So as I call your name, if you are here, if you'd please come forward and let the Board recognize and acknowledge you. I would also like to point out that our Board President, Chris Jacob, served in the United States Army, as well as Dr. Sam Sortino, served in the Air Force, in the Air National Guard. So thank you to you two for your service. The first person I'd like to call is from Mason Ridge, and it's Randy Phant. And Randy has served in the United States Army. Randy. And then from Oak Brook, I know he's here, Mr. Kevin Hilton, who served in the Air Force. Mr. Hilton. And I'm not sure if this person made it or not. Jeff Lakavoff from Piromont. Joe, is Jeff here?
Yeah.
All right. Here we go. And Jeff served in the United States Marine Corps. And from our Transportation Department, Bill Goodbred. And Bill also served in the Marine Corps. Is Bill here? Bill served in 1967, '08, around the Vietnam Era. And I don't know, yes, he is here, from Carman Trails, Mike Schultz. Mike. And Mike served in the Navy. And did BJ James make it tonight? Did anybody know?
From South High?
So BJ couldn't be here tonight. From our Security Department, Paul Taylor. Is Paul here? Oh, he's behind. There's Paul. Thank you, Paul. Paul also served in the Marine Corps. We've got several Marines here tonight. Hurrah. And I don't know if he made it or not, Tim Avan, who's a CAD technician. Is Tim here? All right, Tim, come on up. And Tim served in the Navy. So is there anyone else here tonight that I missed? It may have come in that we've missed recognizing. Anyone else on the staff? We've got one? Come forward, sir. Your name, sir?
Louis Connelly. Louis Connelly. I was in the National Guard and Army Reserve. Awesome.
Thank you, Louis. And as Kathy organizes for a photo, who do you want from the Board over there?
Well, probably you should have our veterans and you.
Okay. Well, I've still got some remarks, so you go ahead. I've still got to do some remarks. So as we close for the photo, as I encouraged, I was talking to the students at one of the schools today, and I was just encouraging them to take some time, maybe over Thanksgiving, when you get together as a family, and instead of sitting there and staring at your phone and your iPad or whatever, to actually maybe engage in a conversation with a family member who might be a veteran and just sort of ask them to tell you about their service because they, each one standing here, I guarantee you, has some very, very interesting stories. And they tend to serve at times that are very historical points in our country's history, and they have some very fascinating things to say. And so I would encourage family members and friends of our vets to engage in some conversations and learn a little bit about their service. So we thank you all for our veterans. And right now, I would like to turn it over. So pleased to have, from our very own North High School, Brian Reeves has brought us a group of students. And I don't know in what order, but we have Katie Horseman, Sarah Koo, Leo Diamant, Lizzie Metolsky, Sammy Elfenbaum, Dana Randolph, and Josh Zimmerman. And they're going to sing the National Anthem. If I could get everyone to please stand, please. Thank you. Thank you so much. That was outstanding. Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Reeves for bringing the group tonight. We really appreciate that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Marty.
This is just impromptu, but I just want to say, we had some of our schools have ceremonies today. So proud, and I know Chris was out and about, and I know my colleagues at the district office were out. And I just want to thank our principals and our school community. I was at schools today that has many, as 50 to 60 veterans, grandparents and parents and the community members. And I was touched, and it was just a glorious day to recognize our veterans in our community. So it's been fun tonight at the Board meeting to recognize, but it's been going on all day long and for a couple of days, and I think it'll continue this week. So thank you, Parkway, and Parkway's staff members and administrators.
Good evening, President Jacob, members of the Board. Tonight, I'm here to begin our recognition of our National Merit Students. So we have 50 Parkway students that have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. National Merit Scholarship Corporation is an independent, non-for-profit organization that conducts competitions for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships through two programs, the National Merit Scholarship Program and the National Achievement Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition which identifies seniors who represent the top of their graduating class. Committed students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who entered the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. More than 1.5 million juniors in over 22,000 high schools entered the National Merit Program by taking the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as the initial screener. 16,000 students, representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, qualified as National Merit semifinalists. 29 Parkway students earned National Merit semifinal status, and an additional 21 students are recognized as commended. National Merit semifinalists will have an opportunity to qualify for nearly 8,300 Merit Scholarship Awards worth $32 million that will be offered next spring. Some students were unable to join us this evening for the recognition, but we will still announce their names. Now, please welcome Tim McCarthy, Principal at Central High, who will recognize and announce his students. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Kirshoffer, and to the Board on behalf of all of the high school principals in their respective communities. Thank you very much for recognizing these wonderful students tonight. Students, as we call your names, please come forward. Start with Dr. Marty, and then shake hands with all of the members of the Board, and then you'll gather in school groups over here to my left. So Central High's National Merit semifinalists are Gajen Kumar, Shiranya Kumar, Simran Panwar, Alani Schmidt, Abigail Ernest, Naomi Ernest. Central High's commended students able to be with us this evening, Nathan Dedelbach, Samuel Schaefer, Lucas Shanker, Jessica Volpe. Central High had three semifinalists unable to be here, but I would like to read their names. Jennifer Whalen, Joshua Yang, and Jingong Zhang. In addition, we had two commended students unable to join us this evening, Christopher Gu and Bobby Throckmorton. And it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jenny Markward from Parkway North.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to announce the North High National Merit Scholars. And just to add that these young men and women are obviously amazingly talented intellectually, but just amazing young people, and so we are very proud of all of their accomplishments. So we have, from North High, Adawa Imbea, who could not be with us tonight, Philip Hayfitz, please come forward. Justin Cammy, I don't believe could be here tonight, but please congratulate Justin Cammy. Noah Hartman, Daniel Lev, and Emily Schaaf. And it is my pleasure to announce Dr. Patrice H., who will honor the South High National Merit Scholars.
Okay, it is with patriot pride that I present the students from South High. Starting off with our South High commended students, Karish Chapman is not here, but we'll give her a hand anyway. Caitlin Clopfer, Christopher Mark, Ishka Zeeman. And now for our South High semifinalists, Derek Burnt, Shane Blair, Sarah Jackson, Alexander Cloppenberg, Si Peany, Kevin Sitzer, and Rachel Zhang. And now, I'd like to welcome Kate Piffle to the stadium, to the podium, from West High School.
Hi, good evening. Before I bring up my fellow Longhorns, if I could, I'd like to, on behalf of Central, North, South, and West High, if I could have the parents please stand and say thank you for all of you done for all of our students this year. Parents, please stand. Okay, our West High commended students, Shannon Anderson, Andrew Impastato, Julia Lee, Millen Mulhultra, Rachel Osborne, Kristen Peterson, Rebecca Su, Joan Tao, and Mark Umstead. And our West High semifinalists, Jordan Beveridge, Anthony Carroll, Crystal Liu, Matthew Peterson, Joseph Ross, Clara Sun, Samuel Waite, Helen Wodilo, and Steven Zhang.
And I think that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present the winners of the Stars Award. So this summer, aspiring scientists participated in the students and teachers' research scientist program at University of Missouri-St. Louis. For six weeks, these students partnered with St. Louis area professors and professionals to conduct intensive research, which culminated in a technical report. These reports were reviewed, and those that exemplified difficulty and complexity in research, appropriateness of research methodology, and quality of writings, findings, and overall quality of the research process were recognized as winners of the LMI Aerospace Award for Excellence in Research. We had two Parkway students this year who achieved this award. So first, we have Si Peany from South High. Her project was titled "The Effect of Miglustat on Bone Mineral Density of In-Vivo Hypophosphatemia Mice Model." And then we have Melanie Young from West High. Her project was titled "Assessing the Status of Thioflavin T as a Substrate of P-Glycoprotein Using Live Cell Fluorescence Imaging." Congratulations for your research and accomplishments.
Lisa Meredith, one of our assistant superintendents, is making a presentation for our newest Blue Ribbon Schools. Just back from Washington, D.C.
Just back last night. Thank you very much. It is my honor to be here to help celebrate two of our schools. McKelvey Elementary and Parkway West Middle are recipients of the coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools awarded, award presented by the U.S. Department of Education. Parkway now has 17 Blue Ribbon Schools. Earlier this week, earlier this week, I had the privilege of joining Kim Cohen, Principal of McKelvey, and Annie Miller, West Middle Principal, at the recognition luncheon in Washington, D.C. to accept the Blue Ribbon Honor. While there, we were inspired by the incoming Secretary of Education, Dr. Jim King, as well as the National Teacher of the Year, Shanna Peoples. Shanna's talk, she addressed the F-word that impacts education, and it was fear. And by the end, she talked about how we needed to turn fear into faith and believe in our students, believe in our teachers, believe in our systems. And I would say McKelvey and West Middle are examples of two schools who are not fearful, but they do have faith in the educational system and in reaching all. When announcing the award recipients in September, U.S. Secretary of Education Arne Duncan said, "This honor recognizes your students' accomplishments and the hard work and dedication that went into their success. Your journey has taught you collaboration, intentional instruction, and strong relationships in school and with your community. You represent excellence in vision, in implementation, and in results, and we want to learn as much as we can from you." This week, the department honored 285 public and 50 private schools at a recognition ceremony in Washington, D.C. It is the 33rd year history of the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program honors public and private elementary, middle, and high schools where students either achieve very high learning standards or are making notable improvements in closing the achievement gap. The award plaque affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. The award flag gracing a school's building is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. I would now like to introduce Parkway graduate, Parkway Hall of Fame member, and Senator Jill Shoup, who has a couple of words to say.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, it is such an honor to be here on such a joyous night in the district. You know, it's raining outside, but you would never know that inside here with all the excitement and the warmth. So I'm here tonight to also congratulate all the students and their parents who have won those National Merit Awards tonight, but additionally, to say congratulations on these Blue Ribbon School Awards. You know, when you talked about 285 schools, I want to put that in a little bit of perspective. So this year, 285 schools were selected as Blue Ribbon Schools. That's out of all the schools across the nation. Remember that in Missouri alone, we have over 520 schools- over 520 school districts. Multiply that by the number of schools in each of those districts, and then spread that out throughout the nation. And these are really impressive and exciting awards that say to me, not only do you care deeply about the success of our students, but the people in our schools in this district that I care so much about, reach out and work with kids, meet them where they are, to move them forward. And that is so critical and important. So I'm delighted and honored to be here with you to celebrate your staff, your students, your teachers, and yourselves. Congratulations on all of you have done.
So in Missouri, we had ten schools honored this year. Eight were from the St. Louis area, and of those eight, two were from Parkway. Pretty proud. I now invite McKelvey Principal, Kim Cohen, Assistant Principal, Luke Dix, and Jamie Moore, math facilitator, to please join me at the podium. These schools that are recognized go through a rigorous and laborious application process that requires many hands on deck. So many thanks to these fine folks who helped work on the application process for McKelvey. We would like to acknowledge all the others at the McKelvey staff who also gave input. Are there other McKelvey staff members here? Would like to stand up. Thank you. You're part of it. Again, congratulations to our newest National Blue Ribbon School, McKelvey. Would West Middle Principal Annie Miller, Assistant Principal Allison Love, and ELA teachers Mary Byrd and Cecilia Ryan, please join me at the podium. Are there other West Middle staff members here? We appreciate all that all of the staff members, students, and families do at these two schools. Congratulations, West Middle.
We want to thank all the parents especially for celebrating with us these great accomplishments of your students and everything else that we've done. They're just wonderful.
Well, I think you can hear me. Oh, the people at home can't. So we want to thank everybody, especially the students and all of the efforts that went into these celebrations tonight. We appreciate the special dignitaries that have been here, and we'd like to recognize Sue Allen also, who's here tonight celebrating this with us too. She's one of our state representatives. So thank you again. We'll take a five-minute break, a brief break, and then we'll get back to the meeting. Thank you. Welcome back to our continuation of the board meeting. Let me just say first, 6.0, there's some additions, corrections, and modifications. The addition to the agenda of item 11.20, approval of requests for professional services, Kagan Coaching. So that'll be in the consent items. And I'd also like to mention here that we are moving, we have some of our students that are going to participate with us tonight, and so we're going to move work session 15.01 to where 14 is, so that we can get those students in that, and not keep them here way past their bedtime.
Chris, can we move them before the consent agenda?
Would you like to move them now?
Why don't we do that?
All right, let's do that. We'll do that first. Lisa, you are up.
No, we have to do citizen statements.
Before citizen statements?
We do citizen statements.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're almost up.
We've got you all messed up.
You're almost up. Yeah, don't change things on me.
I'm sorry. I would feel the same way.
And we have to approve the agenda.
Citizen statements first.
Yes. So we will go ahead with the citizen statements, and I just want all of you to know, there's quite a few of them tonight. You'll have two minutes in which to say what you want to share with us, and you will all receive a reply in writing. But right now, let me just say one thing too. As I look over the sheet, there's a couple of things I just want to make sure that I tell you so that we don't step on some of the Missouri laws that govern what we do in these meetings, and especially as it relates to our students and our employees. Several individuals have indicated a desire to make a public comment tonight. I've reviewed that signup sheet, and many of these individuals have requested to speak on a personnel matter. The Board of Education does not hear public comment on certain matters in open session. These are topics which include specific personnel matters and student matters. Matters such as these are closed topics under Missouri revised statute 610-021. And I know you're interested in subsection 3, 13, and 14, but they all govern those kind of things, so that we don't do something that puts in jeopardy either a person or a student. Therefore, we cannot allow public comment on specific personnel matters in open session tonight. If you want to speak on a topic, if the individuals who want to speak on this topic wish, you may submit your comments in writing to the board. Additionally, for those of you who do speak tonight, if your comments begin to address specific personnel or student matters, then I'll have to remind you about that, and you'll have to stop and sit down. All of that is just so that we maintain the privacy that's required for students and for employees. With that in mind, we will begin with Kevin Schukers. If you would just state your name and your address for us, please, so we make sure we have it right here.
Kevin Schukers, 1931, Pittsburgh, St. Louis, 6314.
Thank you.
President Jacob, Dr. Marty, members of the board, I'm one of those folks you just mentioned that want to talk about the personnel matter. I understand that you don't want to necessarily be able to hear it in public here. Unfortunately, and I'll abide, obviously, by your rules, but what I want to state very clearly is, this situation, and I think everyone knows what, you know, there's a group of us here to talk about it tonight, every one of us have very, very passionate feelings about this, and there is somebody that's being wronged. And we should have the ability to speak to it in public, in a public forum like this that we pay taxes to support, that members of the... that members of the armed forces, two of you here, obviously on the board, fought for that right, for us to have the freedom of speech. We should be able to speak to that. We really should. I mean, this person that I want to talk about has made a profound difference on my family. Okay? Yeah, if you want, I can speak to it, I just won't mention a name. Is that acceptable to you?
I hope so, I just don't want to do something that, you know...
Oh, I understand, sir, and that's why I want to respect that, I really do.
And as a board, we want to be completely open and unbiased, too.
Sure. Well, you know, there's a certain teacher, you know, at West, that taught two of my three kids, and that teacher made a profound difference on my kid's life, particularly my twenty-one-year-old. When he was a senior, he suffered a very unfortunate incident that caused him his senior year, from November seventeenth onward, to completely lose any desire to graduate from school. When he did that, there were two people at West that saved him. One of those was a coach, and the other was the teacher in question. That teacher spent the time with my son that nobody else would. She made sure that he graduated, she made sure that he got all of his work done, she made absolutely sure that he came out of West High a much stronger man.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're two minutes, so we've reached that, I appreciate your comments.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, too.[701.12][701.12](APPLAUSE). And help me out, too, if you would refrain from clapping, that helps us get along a little quicker, so that we can get to what we want to do with the students, too. Miki Wagner.
You can wait till you get up to... People at home that are watching, they want to hear your wonderful... I'm Miki Wagner, I'm one five six one one, Parasol Drive, and I'm a lifelong Parkway person. I graduated from Parkway North after going to Craig School, Weber School, Parkway East, and now I am the parent of a seventh grade student at Parkway West Middle School. Parkway taught me to respect people with different abilities, beliefs, and means. These differences should not separate us, but instead give us a starting point from which we can begin our education, explore various perspectives, and decide what we each feel is right. Instead of being afraid of differences, or rejecting people that are different, let us learn about them, people first, not the label. Let's have an inclusive education in Parkway. Let us explore what makes us unique. Differences can be challenging, unless understood, or at least examined. Our students are capable of understanding differences if we give them a chance. This is how my husband and I have always raised our child. We are all different from each other in some way. This entire idea, always a passion and always a belief, truly hit home for us in May. Our child, who we always believed to be our daughter, let us know that he is in fact our son. He is the same person he was prior to May, he just let us in on the gender to which he identifies. We have had mostly positive experiences from the Parkway community. Our son has lots of friends. We have been told by parents and students that they support our child, even though they don't truly understand the many issues related to being transgender. Parents have told us they want their children's questions answered, but they don't have the answers themselves. They want this in the curriculum taught in schools, we want this in that curriculum. Your students want to be educated. Schools should be a place where students can ask questions and have them answered. And let's be practical. Your educators, your teachers, staff, and administrators are required by law to recognize children who are transgender by the gender to which they identify.
Two minutes. Thank you very much.
If I may conclude, please. You don't tie the hands of your educators, they need to be able to answer the questions for all of their students. Transgender kids and all of the health curriculum needs to be included, there's lots of different kinds of kids in Parkway, and let's recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you. You will receive a response in writing. Kristen Wilson.
Hi, I'm Kristen Wilson, and I live at five thirty eight Kennelworth Lane. I am currently an eighth grader at Parkway West Middle. At my school, our motto is, "Where everyone stands together with a purpose, place, and voice." All the students there do a very good job of following and respecting that motto. We all make sure we respect one another. But why are we being taught about some lifestyles and not all of them? That doesn't seem fair. We cannot pretend that certain people don't exist. They deserve equal respect and understanding. They also need to feel safe. I worry about some of my friends who are in the LGBT community, who don't always feel accepted or understood. For them, my friends and I ask that you make the necessary changes to our studies to simply educate everyone on our basic differences. Just teaching us about certain lifestyles that don't include everyone is not supporting West's school motto. By updating the health curriculum, all students will understand everyone's differences and respect one another. As I enter into high school, I hope that all my peers have the knowledge about these certain topics that are not being taught now, so we are all educated and are able to stand together as one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan Seidel.
My name is Susie Seidel, my address is six one four Kennelworth Lane. I'm in eighth grade at Parkway West Middle School. Last month, I showed interest in my parents attending this school board meeting regarding curriculum change. When they told me a student spoke, I was eager to speak as well, wanting to share my view as a Parkway student and friend in the LGBT community. In elementary school, I learned how to write sentences; in middle school, I learned how to find X in an equation. These are things that I have grown up with and now can complete without even thinking too hard. This doesn't mean I like solving math problems or writing for long periods of time, which is something I need to know in life. What we learn in school benefits us forever. Therefore, I believe education in LGBT is very important. Whether we like it or not, this matter is part of our presence and will be part of our futures. Growing up, learning the aspects of LGBT would provide a common knowledge for students, and every student would be on the same page. This would prevent bullying, offensive comments, and students would learn this information from a trusted source, their teachers, rather than from a stranger, the internet, et cetera. LGBT education is just one of those things where not everyone is going to agree, but everyone has a right to be informed. Education is the key to a friendly and prospering community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Connor.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Connor, twelve fifteen Devonworth Drive. I've got three children that have this teacher in question. Currently, my youngest daughter is a freshman and has this teacher. She's an incredible teacher, she's passionate, engaging, engaging, funny, and inspiring. My two oldest children also had her as a teacher, and were inspired enough to become journalism majors. She's well revered within the schools, a teacher in and out of the classroom. Her extracurricular work with the students has gone above and beyond what most teachers have done or will commit to. Her life lessons to our kids have been invaluable. I ask that you review the current petition with over five hundred and ninety signatures, a hundred and sixty-one comments, from current students, past students, and even Parkway West teachers. The impact that she's had on so many people is undeniable. This teacher, that all children want and deserve to have, as a parent, she's the teacher we wish our children could have for all the subjects in high school. Since her leave of absence, my freshman daughter has struggled significantly. Currently, there's only one grade in the gradebook. In place of a fifteen-year, highly respected veteran teacher, Parkway's put a substitute teacher whom has not demonstrated the qualities that are needed to teach a very critical foundation year for freshman students. The substitute teacher clearly does not have the knowledge or creativity for teaching different learning styles that this teacher exhibited on a daily basis. I feel that the Parkway School District is punishing my child, as well as many more children, by suspending this teacher indefinitely. Myself and many others have called and written many emails to administrators, board members, only to receive dismissive answers that do not address when this teacher will be allowed back in her rightful position to teach our children. We've all made mistakes in our lives. I do not feel that a seven-week suspension for a teacher with an impeccable record for such a minor incident should result in such a lengthy suspension.
Your two minutes, I'm sorry you're out.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and finish. Every day that she is out of the classroom...
I'm sorry. Carrie Vols.
Hi, I'm Carrie Vols, twenty-two fifty Village Green Parkway. I'm here today in the hopes that you will consider what I have to say when you vote to pass the new health curriculum to include all student needs, but more specifically, those in the LGBTQ student body. I want you to understand that insofar as I know as of today, anyway, my children are not LGBTQ. So you would think that whether or not you pass the curriculum to include these youths is neither here nor there, as far as I would be concerned, but you couldn't be further from the truth. Because my children have friends that identify as LGBTQ, and for all I know, so do one or both of my children, but they just haven't come to a point in their life where they're ready to disclose that information to us. So I need to know that Parkway is making sure that all children, regardless as to whether or not they openly discuss how they identify, get accurate, medically correct information regarding all aspects of human health and safety. I believe that when we know better, it is incumbent upon us to do better. We know that students in the LGBTQ Parkway community have expressed a need for comprehensive information regarding their health. We know that including this information in our health program is critical to getting these students the accurate information that to date has been non-existent. We know that the medical community widely recognizes that there are negative health outcomes for LGBTQ individuals due to the stress that results from a lack of understanding by their peers, so we must not only provide comprehensive health education information to the LGBTQ youth, but also to the rest of their peers to create an environment where there is understanding and clarity. It's time to do something. We know, by our own personal experiences, that information is a powerful thing. Let's give all of our students the tools and education they need to be healthy, knowledgeable, and most importantly, safe, as they move out into the world. Please vote yes in March to include the Parkway LGBTQ community in our health curriculum here in Parkway. Now that we all know better, please do better for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Butler.
(INAUDIBLE) statement.
Okay, thank you. Carol Green.
(INAUDIBLE).
Okay, thank you very much. Louis Conley.
President and board members, my name is Louis Conley, and I live at five sixty-four Dry Ridge Drive. I'm here to support the said teacher. I feel strongly that the board should vote to reinstate the said teacher. The said teacher is an excellent teacher and respected by both the students and the staff. The said teacher's absence has been greatly missed by all of her students. Sincerely, Louis Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Lisa Stevens.
Lisa Stevens, six eighteen Kennelworth Lane. Good evening. I am a parent of three sixth graders, yes, they are triplets, at Parkway West Middle School. People always look at me funny, so I have to clarify. I have two daughters who are neurotypical, and I have one daughter with autism. When we moved to St. Louis from Los Angeles ten years ago, I researched school districts thoroughly, and we purposefully bought a house in the Parkway School District because we knew it would meet the needs of all our daughters. I am here tonight to state my support for the new proposed curriculum at Parkway. I say this as a parent of a child who has benefited tremendously from an environment within Parkway schools that nurtures every student, that values everyone's differences, and includes all. By nature of being human, we may tend to fear what we don't understand. We may fear something or someone, we may exclude them, bully them, or disrespect them because of misinformation and misunderstanding. Sometimes it's purposeful, but most often, it's with no malcontent. Our daughter, who is also different, has benefited endlessly because the teachers, administration at Parkway have strongly encouraged an environment of inclusion and dignity. This filters down, and we see it demonstrated daily by the attitude and behavior of Parkway students. Just like civil rights and disability rights before, we are now embarking on a time where a marginalized group is also asking to be understood, respected, and included within a framework of science and a research-based curriculum. I feel the school district never loses when this happens. It creates the ultimate environment for learning, and that is what Parkway is known for, time and time again, creating spaces for all our children to learn and to be prepared for a world in which they enter, a world that is constantly changing and constantly evolving. I sincerely hope that the board will pass this curriculum, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight, and thank you for all the work you do on behalf of all our amazing students.
Thank you. Frank Pellegrino.
Hello, I'm Frank Pellegrino, my wife and I live at twelve ten Dry Ridge Road. We have two daughters attending Parkway West, a freshman and a junior, and the subject is the teacher. Based on input I've received from my daughters, this teacher is very talented, in fact, my freshman tells us that she learned more in six weeks with this teacher than she had in all previous English classes combined. The focus today is concern for education. Obviously, a substitute can't fill the shoes of a professional like this teacher, but my daughter becomes more frustrated and confused by the day. For some time, I've actually been concerned about the quality of education at Parkway West. I hear a lot of negatives about various teachers, this one, it's been all positive. So the desire is to get this teacher back in the classroom as quickly as possible. It was mentioned, there was an online petition, I would encourage you to go out there and read some of the comments overwhelmingly from teachers, students, and parents alike, it's very positive. It's clear she was a caring, very concerned teacher, interested in the well-being of her students. So we ask that you reinstate her as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm saying this last name right. Sarah Van Sleet. You'll correct me.
That's exactly right, I'm very impressed. I am Sarah Van Sleet, and I will deviate from the topic at hand, and it's, I'm here for Bridgeton Landfill, I do their community relations, actually, and they're at one three five seven zero, St. Charles Rock Road, Bridgeton, Missouri. And I wanted to say, first of all, that we had a fantastic group of high school teachers from the Parkway School District out for teacher training last week, and they were so excited to be there, and they learned so much about science, I got an amazing email back from them that I shared with all of our engineers and scientists and bioengineers, and they were so thrilled that they had taken part in this teacher training, and so thank you for that. I also wanted to say that I know there's been a lot of confusion in the news lately in many concerned school districts, and we appreciate the concern, and we wanted to just come here and say that Bridgeton Landfill is safe, and it's in a managed state, and it's intensely monitored, and we recognize that the confusion is out there, and we hope that the recent CDC's report on the air, land, and water around Bridgeton Landfill, that it's safe, has provided a measure of comfort to anybody who is concerned. And we also have posted a number of expert reports lately as part of our ongoing litigation brought by the Attorney General, and that's on our website, bridgetonlandfill.com. And the reality is that, you know, scientifically-based reports like the CDC's or the repeated assurances of the EPA sometimes don't make the headlines, like more scary things do, more alarmist things do, so we're trying to combat that and make sure that everybody gets the CDC's and the EPA's reports, too. And we really do believe that it's physically impossible for what's going on at Bridgeton Landfill underground, the subservice reaction, to ever reach Westlake Landfill under current conditions, and so, you know, we recognize that school districts, some felt a need to communicate with their community, and we appreciate that they did so with such concern. And we're parents, too, I'm a mom of three, so we want to keep the school board informed, and we appreciate being a part of the discussion with your teachers, and we always encourage teacher training to happen on our landfill with our scientific experts and our engineers, they love it, so, thank you, and I'll have a handout for you.
Thank you very much. Pamela Kramer.
Hello, my address is three four three Baxter Road. I am a Parkway parent of a fifth and seventh grader. I am here to express my support of the proposed sex ed curriculum frameworks. On this Veterans Day, it's fitting that I'm here to urge you to be on the right side of history. With change comes progress. In the sixties, the educational challenge was integration. In the eighties, it was inclusion for kids with disabilities. Today, we face a historical crossroads for our gay and transgender children. Can you imagine treating a student of color as if they didn't exist? Or a child with cerebral palsy in a wheelchair? Or a child with cerebral palsy in a wheelchair? Why then are we considering the exclusion of gay and transgender children? But this curriculum update is much more than that. There are many positive improvements that should not be overshadowed by a religious debate. And, as elected officials, it is your duty and your obligation to ensure separation of church and state, and more importantly, that you ensure every student has a voice. Every student is included, and every student feels safe. You do not want to be on the wrong side of history. Vote to pass this curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Morrell?
I'm Dennis Morrell, 1276 Arbor Bluff Circle, Baldwin, Missouri, 63021. I spent some time up here last month at the meeting, and talking about the sexual ed curriculum, I talked not about an opinion, but about a process, and transparency and things like that. I've heard a lot of far-reaching remarks here, and I think when you talk about transparency and the facts that drive decisions and where they should go, make sure our children are taught with facts in mind and not opinions and things like that, I think that's pretty critical. So I'm looking forward to the response to my email from three weeks ago to Mr. Ramspot on some things after we talked, that maybe I can help in some way to help drive a process that gets to those facts. Three weeks isn't a lot of time, but we're 120 days out before a decision is made, and maybe there are some changes. I'd kind of like to see what those are. In a spirit of transparency, I'm not sure if there is a place where I can find out where those things are, but it'd be good to know. The other thing I've come to learn that, for whatever reason, the proposed curriculum that's not yet been approved by the board is being taught right now at a West Middle in the sixth grade class. Kind of surprising to me. I kind of thought there'd be, you know, some sort of a process, like I talked about, that not supposed to do that until it's been approved. There's that process you have to follow. So I think we all want the right things. I think opinions are not. The facts and the evidence have to drive what the policy needs to be, and until we get there, we can't really teach anything. You're just teaching opinions at that point. So my hope is that, and I guess in a lot of ways, I'm kind of throwing down the gauntlet here, I'm willing to help in any way I can to find these facts and the evidence to drive the policy. Pro bono, whatever it takes to do that. I like to see truth in what we teach our kids, and I don't know that we're getting there. That lack of transparency kind of scares me a little bit, kind of wonder why things are out in the open. So, appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy Martin? She must have submitted hers in writing. All right. That's the one. John Williams?
Hello, I'm John Williams. I'm here with my wife, Sarah. We live at 49 Brook Mill Lane, Town and Country, Missouri. We're here on behalf of that said teacher as well. I have two children that have this teacher, one that has her currently, one that's had her in the past, both of which are extremely better people because of her. My daughter has her now. She desperately wants her back in the classroom, is making a huge impact. She embodies the definition of an exemplary teacher. She is the trusted adult in the building for my children. Please consider what is best for all the children and not just a few. Removing her from the classroom is an injustice. She made a mistake. She is human. You have a great opportunity at Parkway West and the Parkway School District to demonstrate forgiveness. There is so much value in an adult teacher humbling herself to admit a mistake and apologize to students involved. This process would lead to healing and closure. She's a teacher who impacts lives, invests in her students, and connects with them, as you've already heard tonight. She's past, present, students past and present respect her. Look at the petition that's been noted as well. The Board of Education, please do the right thing and reinstate her. Put her back in the classroom where she belongs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lip Tong Chua. I want to do Spanish here, and it's probably not right.
I'm Lip Tong Chua, from 14410, 14410, yes, correct, Carolyn Drive, and I'm speaking to you today because I'm concerned that a proposed new sexual health curriculum is omitting an increasing sexual health threat, that is, the prevalence of internet porn, and the risk of using graphic sexual images in the curriculum. I'm a licensed clinical social worker who volunteer at an organization that helps people who struggle with sexual addiction. I see firsthand the increasing number of young people who are addicted to internet porn. In the 2014 survey with a nationally representative sample of 1,000 U.S. adults, the survey reviews that for younger men between age 18 to 30, 17% first view porn before age nine, 38% before turning 12, and 88% first view porn before turning 16. Among the women surveyed, 25% of the girls between age 18 to 30 first view porn before age 12, and 61% view porn before turning 16 years old. Here's an account of a young man who described his first exposure to internet porn. "I was shocked and excited. I felt scared and aroused all at the same time. I didn't know what I was seeing, but from that moment on, I was never been able to stop going back. Before the age of 12, I was addicted to porn." According to the Journal of Adolescent Health, prolonged exposure to porn leads to an exaggerated perception of sexual activity in society, belief that prospicuity is the natural state, and belief that abstinence and sexual inactivity are unhealthy. In addition, prolonged exposure to porn leads to broad-ranging sexual acting out and depression. There's a need to educate our students about the lurking dangers of internet porn and teach them how to deal with it. On the same line, I strongly against the use of graphic sexual materials in sexual education because it can be overwhelming and even frightening. In my work with sexual addicts and their families, many could recall their first encounter of graphic sexual images, usually at a young age.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
All right. I'll submit this.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Logan Williams?
I live at 49 Brook Mill Lane, Town and Country, Missouri. In fact, my father was just a second ago. I'm the junior at Parkway West High School, coming in to speak on behalf of said teacher. She made a really, really big impact on my life as a freshman. She's my trusted teacher. She was a real reason why I wanted to stay at West, actually. I, at one point, was thinking of going private, and she's one of the real reasons I stuck with Parkway. She's very encouraging. She helped me grow in many different ways, especially in writing, since I'm not very well at it. But also with the way that she treated everyone. She was very, very open and very positive, and there wasn't a thing about her that didn't just tell you you wanted to be more involved in her room. Also, last year, we had a janitor at our school named Ollie. He was struggling with strong medical issues. She funded the whole, or helped fund the whole thing, get the whole GoFundMe started. Very positive press for Parkway. But I also, I want to emphasize on the second chance part and for forgiveness here. I know me, I've made mistakes. Every single one of us in this room, I think we've all made mistakes. I'm not saying I agree with what she did, but I would like to think that maybe we could give her a second chance in today's world, because I think if you just terminate her employment, I don't see how that relates to the real world and what that teaches me as a student, because if I'm an employee at someplace, I cannot just go get my boss fired for something that was said, so I'm here just for, hopefully, a positive lesson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Williams?
I live on 49 Brook Mill Lane, and Logan's my brother, and John Williams is my father, and I'm speaking on behalf of the teacher as well. I'm going to start off by saying I don't really like public speaking at all, but I will speak on behalf of this teacher because of how much I think of her. She creates an extremely safe environment. Whenever I walk into her room and she's in there, I feel so safe. She's my trusted adult, the only one in that building, actually, and I knew that after the first three days of school, that if I ever had a problem, I could go speak to her and she would comfort me. She goes above and beyond for her students. She stays after, sorry, she stays after and before school to help students with academics. She's very compassionate and kind, and she makes an extremely fun environment for students. She talks about current things and helps kids know what's going on in the real world. She's the highlight of my day. I can easily say I've laughed at least once every day in that class. She loves what she does, and it shows. There's a lot of teachers that just teach because, but she teaches because she wants to teach students and know that they walked out of that building with something new each day. And I also want to bring up the GoFundMe page. I think that was very awesome because it brought good publicity to the school, and I know that's really good for Parkway to get good publicity in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Scott McKnight?
I'm Scott McKnight. I live at 1617 Foxley Court South. I'm speaking to you today in support of the teacher in suspension. I was in, I'm actually in the class that this all went down, and know both of the kids personally involved. Although I feel that poor judgment was used, I don't believe a valued teacher like this teacher should lose her career over it. She's taught me more in a few months than I have learned in the previous year. She teaches unlike any other teacher, as she is tough in the most beneficial way, and emphasizes the importance of guidelines and deadlines like no other teacher I've ever had. I feel like so many other students recognize the importance of these skills, not only in school, but in life. I would like to bring her back, and I hope you consider the points I've stated in your decision process. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Sue Weaver?
I live at 417 Claymont Drive. Last time I was here, I talked on the priorities and how Parkway needs to reevaluate our priorities so as to not elevate any children to be more special than any other children. In order to feed that beast that we've created, we now have literally redefined the term bully to include any time a child feels bad due to another child's behavior. Instantly, one child becomes a victim, and the other becomes known as a bully. We need to reexamine the definition of a few words. Rude, inadvertently saying or doing something that hurts someone else. Mean is purposefully saying or doing something to hurt someone else, once or maybe twice. Bullying is intentionally aggressive behavior repeated over time that involves an imbalance of power. I think we can all agree the term rude sums up the behavior of a lot of teens. Mean, purposely doing something once or twice, fits a great deal of the behavior we see in middle school and high schools. But I think we need to reserve the term bully for when it really applies. As a mom of a child with a learning disability, who has been bullied, who is different than other kids, and I have spent much of my time trying to help her feel that she is, help her understand that she is different, I do not want her to feel like a victim. I can tell you that most often, the bully is a child who's trying to find their way in the world, and not some big mean bully, not even really a problem child. Rather, this is a kid who's looking for guidance and trying to find his or her way, and trying to figure out where they fit into the hierarchy of middle school. Following an incident, or when she comes home feeling teased or left out, I so often have conversations with my daughter, in which I teach her that kids are all learning strategies for how to cope with this world. Some kids learn great strategies early in life. Some kids need to be taught lessons several times. Rarely do I think a situation with my daughter was a time that needed disciplinary action by the school. These are teaching moments for parents, and are really a golden opportunity to teach your children that life is 10% what comes your way and 90% what you do with it. For those of you who haven't seen it, this is what's posted on the side outside West Middle right now. I feel those words have great relevancy in this conversation. I know the greatest percentage of students in Parkway to not be biased, not be bullies, but to be warm, caring, accepting, and welcoming. Are they perfect? No. Many are rude, and a few might even be mean.
Sorry, your time is up.
But those are teachable teens, and behaviors that we do not, and behaviors, and we do not need to have a health curriculum overcalled so we can overcome those so-called biases and so-called bullies.
Thank you, thank you, too. We appreciate all the comments made tonight, and as a board, we're trying to do things in a way that meets with the laws so that we can treat everybody fair and that we don't do something that would cause a greater problem. So thank you very much for your comments. You will receive a response in writing, and again, we appreciate the interest in Parkway. Thank you. At this point, Liz, we are going to move to...
We need to approve the agenda.
Okay, and then we'll do that. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Wednesday, November 11th, 2015?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Resolutions, there are none. At this point, we're going to move to you, Liz.
Lisa.
Lisa. Liz, there's that other energetic one.
I come from a family of all kids with L names. I answered any of them.
You're lucky.
Liz, this is Larry Lee. I answered any of them.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, as the students get ready to come in, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, it is my pleasure to be here this evening to talk about Goal Two, but I'm going to do very little talking, and you are going to do very little listening because you're going to be active during this work session, and we have students here to guide you in that process. Helps if you turn the power on. So, Goal Two, "All students are curious learners who understand and respond to the challenges of the ever-changing world." Understand and respond, these three words comprise the action associated in the Parkway mission. While capable, curious, and confident describe the desired characteristics or dispositions of Parkway graduates, it is the acting reflected in understanding and responding that comprises the desired outcome of a Parkway education. As we look at the measurable objectives under Goal Two, we want students to improve their ability to develop potential solutions for relevant problems in their community and world. We've actually started talking about that measurable objective a little differently in that we also want students to be able to identify potential problems and seek solutions for them. And measurable objective two is for our students to sustain high levels of creativity and expand their capacity for divergent thinking. So, as we look at Goal One, and next month, you'll hear about Goal Three. You've heard me talk in the past how Goal Two serves as a bridge of bringing those academic and the dispositions necessary to identify and solve problems that live in Goal Three together. A couple of weeks ago, you received a report that highlights some of the things that are going on in relationship with Goal Two, including our new student information help desk, our help system that we're beginning to implement in the five highs, or the four high schools, our Spark expansion, the behaviors and thinking patterns of innovative behaviors, and so as we're supporting buildings as they're trying innovative techniques and strategies to help them implement their strategic plan, all of the work going on with Google, with our kids communicating and collaborating, our STEM initiatives, some photographs of some things that took place this summer with elementary Project Lead the Way offerings that our students had for the first time, and we're looking at expanding that. There's some more elementary students with Project Lead the Way. Got them creating, designing, camp invention, where our students are displaying the ideas and the tenacity, the resilience to continue to try to create things, persevering. Our coding, where our students are designing things and then coding to make them perform the way they want them to perform or to solve problems through coding. All of that comes together as we think about making sure that our curriculum is relevant and it is rigorous, where it transfers to learning outside of the school walls. So when we look at curiosity and creativity, curiosity is the urge to know more, the urge to explain something unexpected, positive reaction to something that is novel, and a need or desire to know about oneself or his or her environment. Creativity is coming up with a response that's novel, relevant, a sequence of cognitive operations that give rise to novel insights. For a lot of us, we're uncomfortable in that situation, those situations. We want to know what to expect. We want to know what to follow. The ability to transcend traditional ideas and not necessarily following set rules and patterns, the ability to create and produce original and unique ideas, and then the bringing into being something that did not exist before. Those are the kinds of experiences we're trying to give our students, and this evening we have students here who are going to help you... And this evening, we have students here who are going to help you have some of these experiences. So now I'm going to turn it over to Bill Bass, one of our coordinators of innovation, along with Kim Lenzgog and Amy Johnson, correct? And some students. So here's Bill, and we're not going to talk long before we get you up and moving.
So, good evening. I want to just start by letting you think about when you were a kid and you would, and you would go to the library. And I distinctly remember going to the library as a student, and I would ride my bike in Nevada, Iowa, and I would ride it for two miles to go to the library because that's where the information was. That's where the books were. That's where I needed to go in order to complete my homework. That's all changed. The library is a different place now. And one of our libraries in Parkway has been leading the way in the St. Louis area around this thing called Makerspace. And I'm going to let her tell you about that. But really, if you think about this, if you think about the world around us, and we talk about kids being creative, curious, and confident in an ever-changing world. And when we talk about curiosity, for me, curiosity was in that library and it was in the books. I don't need the library for the books now. I need the library for completely different things. So I want to introduce Kyra Landold from Northeast Middle School and let her talk to you about what the library is and what Makerspaces are around curiosity.
Good evening. I'm Kyra Landold. As Bill said, I'm the Library Media Specialist at Northeast Middle. I would like to thank my administrators for sticking it out and staying here with me tonight. They're back there. And I would like to talk to you a little about Makerspace. This is a map that you see on the screen of K-12 maker culture in the metro area. So this map, one year ago, looked very different. There were probably two or three schools that had started Makerspaces within the school, be it in the library or as an after-school program. It's grown a lot in the year since then. And this is really just the people that know about this map. So we know that there are lots of other Makerspaces out there, even within the Parkway School District. So I'd like to talk to you a little about what is Makerspace. When we first started this, we were asked to come up with a definition. So this is the one that we settled on. A space in which students will be able to design, create, tinker, hack, collaborate, experiment, dream, and explore. Students will learn to solve problems and create solutions in both low-tech and high-tech environments. So yes, it's 3D printing. Yes, it's programming. It's coding. It's all of those things that we want our students to know how to do technologically. But it's also making duct tape wallets and making paper flowers and making, you know, just any kinds of creations that the students come up with. We did a cooking lab a few weeks ago. So we're just really into making in general. As we started the Makerspace program, we kind of ran it as a pilot last year and then kept going this year. We're finding out that we really think our definition might have been just a little off. We're finding out a lot more about what we want it to be as a whole. So here is your first activity. You've been given a piece of paper and a marker. You're welcome to use your own pen if you'd rather. I would like for you to draw a scientist. You will not be judged on the basis of your artistic ability, nor will you have to share what you have drawn. I'm not going to put them up or anything like that. This is your own private little masterpiece here. You have about two minutes to draw your scientist. Go ahead and begin.
Do you need me to check? Make sure they're drawing?
Yeah, maybe. Okay, just a couple more seconds to finish up. All right, time is up. Pens and pencils down, please. I have a few questions to ask you. I don't need you to raise your hand. This is more of just a mental kind of question I want you to think about. I want you to think about if the person in your picture has crazy hair like Einstein. Does the person in your picture wear glasses? Oh, there you go. All about safety in Parkway. Does your person have a tie on? Do they have a lab coat? Is the person male? Is the person white? So this is a study that was done, it's been some years ago, in 1983. But when they did it with children, they noticed that this is pretty much the image that comes up of a scientist. So yours may or may not be similar to what is here. Maybe you are a real outside-the-box kind of thinker. But what we are trying to do with Makerspace is sort of go against the stereotypical science student. So we are trying to include all students of every kind, students that are interested in all different types of things. So I gave some examples a while ago. We have students that are really techie, that are interested in the 3D printing and the coding. I have students that come and make origami every single day and they could care less about the coding. So we're trying to expose them to lots of different things, but the point is, it's for all kids. And we've seen a big change as far as students that are pretty disinterested in school, school in the traditional sense, I should say. Creativity and giving students the chance to be creative really ignites their passion and gives them something to look forward to when they come to school. So this is all about moving from kind of the picture of what school was like in the 1800s, the traditional rows and chairs and sitting up straight, to, this is our library at the bottom, and this is Mr. Marino, our seventh grade English teacher. He's an English teacher, but he's working with them to take apart computers. And they are collaborating. They are completely engaged and they are working together on something they are very passionate about. Sir Ken Robinson, you might be familiar with his work. He is the big guru on creativity in education. This is one of my famous favorite quotes that I use often when I present about Makerspace. We really want to give our students the chance to live their lives now. We are not teaching them at the middle school level to necessarily be successful in high school or to go out and get a good job someday. Yes, that's part of what we say we do. But they're living their lives now. We want them to have a chance to be creative now and to make a difference in the world now. Another thing that Sir Ken Robinson talks a lot about is an example from 2005 in Death Valley. Death Valley is so named because it doesn't rain there. So in 2005, they got six inches of rain, which is three times the normal amount, and beautiful wildflowers bloomed all across Death Valley. So I like to use that analogy with Makerspace because that is lying dormant in most of our students. We just need to tap that potential and find the way to bring out those wildflowers in our students. So how we do it, as librarians, we've been all kind of doing what makes sense for our particular population of students. Some of us are just doing small stations within the library. Some of us are doing an after-school program. And then eventually, kind of the end result is more curriculum integration. Connecting to our culture, we've been working a lot with Spark. Even though Spark is a program for juniors and seniors in high school, we've been taking a look at how middle school students might use that model and might use that to learn how to be creative. So we did a field trip last week, Friday, to Spark, where students did some excellent problem-solving. And we had community mentors come in and we had district-level people come in and be mentors to the students. And it was a great experience. Our students said they had never been on a field trip like that and they wished school were more like that every day. At Northeast Middle, we've got lots going on. As I said, we're very connected to Spark. We participate in the Hour of Code. We're getting ready to grow an indoor garden in our library. And the food will be harvested and served in the school cafeteria. We've been cooking. We have a media room. We're kind of branding our Makerspace model. And our students, I know you heard about last year, our students participate grade level-wide in the Genius Hour project, where they really get a chance to kind of explore, be creative, and be passionate about what they do. What makes that different from what any other school is doing right now is that there's kind of a method to how we're doing it. We're using the design thinking model, which comes out of Stanford University, their D-School. And there's a process where we start with empathy and we build empathy. So when we've got students that are working on community service, for example, and service learning, we build the empathy first. We don't just assume they have it. We make them understand why the user needs what they need. And then we build from there and work on prototyping. That is all I have to say to you because it's time for you to get up and do a little exploring of your own. I have some students here with me this evening. First of all, from Piramont, I have Serena Liu and Mason C. And then from my school at Northeast Middle, I have Colin Vandermeud, Eli Holenkirch, Molly Bass, Isha Chopra, and Mackenzie Dixon. They are each going to partner with you to show us something called a Sphero, which can be used two different ways. It's, you can use it basically just as a remote control where you guide the ball around on the floor. It can also be coded. So you can code and learn lines of code to make it change colors, change directions, and do kind of a complete obstacle course. So, are you ready? All right. Let's everybody stand up.
This one is connected to somebody else's. Somehow the kids have mixed it. Oh, wait, wait, maybe? Oh, we're good. We're good. It's back. I have another one?
So for those of you who are watching this happen, basically what the Sphero is, is a small ball that looks like this. It's a small ball that looks like this. And this ball has a robot inside that essentially gets controlled via Bluetooth from the tablets. And so what we have kids doing, we have a few things going on with Spheros in our district, but what we have is, a lot of times, what we do is we teach coding with this ball. A lot of times when we do coding in classes, what happens is we have kids do the code on the computer and then they just see it happen on the computer, like it controls something on the computer. When they're actually controlling a little ball that rolls around, as you can see, it's going to be rolling around the mazes that we have built for them. When you actually see this physically move, it changes that coding and it makes it a little more important and a little more, a little more real. So what we have going on is just an activity. We had a basic code put together and we're giving our board members an opportunity to use that base code and change the variables so that they can, in fact, go through this process and hopefully complete the maze here in just a few minutes. So that's our, that's our goal. That's what's going on. So as you watch this, just know that this little hundred-dollar ball is teaching our kids how to code and really create the next thing that is going to be inside of that world of technology.
I know you are highly engaged, but we still have a long agenda this evening. So when you get to a stopping point, if you want to make your way back.
Definitely got their attention. Every one of them is smiling. That's right. Every one of them is smiling. Everyone is happy. Oh, I see D.
We've lost. I've lost them.
Are you working your way back, Kim? Or are you still playing?
Good luck getting them all back.
I'm trying.
That's a really mean whistle.
So Kim is talking about the Sphero race. I was going to let you know, if you are a tad bit competitive, TLA would probably take you on in a chariot race where you have to design your own chariot and then race them? Yes. Oh, they want, they say they're on. So as you can see, this is one small sample of the types of things that we are doing to increase the opportunity for all students to engage in learning experiences that allow them to foster the natural curiosity and the natural creativity that our children are born with. And helping them find areas of interest and passion that they might not have realized were areas of interest or areas of passion. And so those are the kinds of things we're doing around Goal Two. We're working on how to systematize this work. Bill and his librarians have worked at creating mobile Makerspace boxes that can be checked out so that schools that have not had the innovative practices that we've heard about as extensively in their building that we can support them in that initiative. But we're learning a lot from our pioneers, and so we certainly appreciate Kyra being one of our pioneers in this area. So at this point, we will open it up for any questions that you might have for any of the students, Kyra, Kim, Amy, Bill, that are here.
Do you have any questions? Are you sufficiently humbled?
Yes. I asked Colin how many, if he writes code and he named a whole bunch of languages I haven't even heard of.
Certainly new languages.
I don't think I'd qualify.
I guess I had a presentation at Claymont PTO also. My husband attended it and really got into it. It became very competitive against the parents, apparently, so it was a lot of fun. Great, thanks.
I don't think I'd qualify for the seventh grade.
I have a question. Kyra, do you have a specific curriculum that you take the students through on your Mondays and Wednesday sessions?
It started out just being trial and error, but it's really important to us that we do what the kids want. So we do a lot of talking to them about things that they're interested in, and then we go to as much development and, you know, outside experience as we can and just sort of bring things in. There are websites like instructables.com that basically it's kind of a list of recipes of ways to make different things. And so we try on Mondays and Wednesdays, we have what's called Open Makerspace where anybody that shows up is allowed to do anything they want that day, basically. But then we do come up with a couple of structured activities, like the Cooking Lab that I talked about, or the Spheros, things like that. So we have planned activities along with the unstructured activities because we always want to keep that open too for students that may not be interested in the thing that we planned. So to answer your question, there's no set curriculum. We just try to listen to what it is that they're interested in doing.
So do you keep track of like your basic framework so when the program grows in the district that you can share it with other library media specialists?
Mm-hmm.
And so they don't have to reinvent the wheel kind of thing?
Right. We do. And I will say, starting out was painful because we had a closet and not a lot of things in the closet. So the kids would be like, I want to make something with motors and wheels and propellers and I want it to light up and do all these things. And we were like, okay, well, I'll go shopping tonight and get all that stuff and have it ready tomorrow. Now this year, we have a much better sense of what they need, so we're prepared for that. And now our entire closet is full, mostly of materials that people have brought in. But we kind of know, we get the question a lot, like, do you want this for Makerspace? My answer is always yes. We take anything because anything can be useful, you know, for lots of different purposes. So it does take time to kind of build up, and that can be scary to schools that are just starting out that don't have the resources upfront. I think a lot of people are under the misconception that they can't start until they have a 3D printer, and so that just seems daunting and they don't start. We started last year with very simple, so we did a cardboard challenge was our first thing. We could not get the kids to stop doing the cardboard. I mean, it was like four weeks in a row, so all they wanted to do was cardboard. And as you know, there's plenty of cardboard available at any Parkway school. We just went out to the recycle bin and got it. So it can be done at very low expense. And again, that was just all about kind of following what our students wanted to do. But we do, as librarians, we share all the time, and so we do a good job of kind of communicating back and forth what we're doing in our schools.
And your funding, does that just come from your library media budget? Your funding to purchase the supplies and the tools that you need?
It comes from a combination of different places. We've had some parents make donations for different things. We've had, you know, applied to PTO for grants and things like that. And then I know in my particular case, I use our activity budget through the library, which is funded by things like the book fair.
Awesome. Thank you.
I was just going to add to Kyra's answer about the collaboration. In the Goal Two report you read about the Innovators Network, that is a place Kyra has been posting regularly on Innovators Network as well, and that is another place where our teachers with innovative practices are sharing and collaborating and sharing those ideas to build that bank so that we can borrow from each other.
So where would you say your classroom is?
Good question, because, so when I started out, the classroom was the library, and then I pretty quickly figured out I wasn't going to be able to use power tools in the library. Those two things just don't go together somehow when people are trying to read. So our industrial technology teacher is gracious enough to let us use his room after school, so that's where our closet is and that's where we keep our things. But the third piece that I showed you in the slide earlier is infusing it within the curriculum. So we're hoping that eventually Makerspace won't really be a space. It'll be more of a mindset and how people think and how people teach and learn. So it would be more of, you know, kind of throughout the whole school would be the end goal.
Got me engaged.
All right. You're welcome, anytime. Come on over.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I would like to thank the students and parents for staying with us this evening.
Can you come back next meeting?
Come back to the-
Can you come back and let us play next meeting?
Thank you for staying. We really appreciate it. My scientist says a kid, because they learn and they never get discouraged. Otherwise, they never learn to talk or walk. Thank you very much. Communications, 10.01, calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle School, and we anticipate a closed session at 6:00 PM. 10.02, Board Liaison Reports. I don't remember if we had any of those, did we? In the last two weeks, three weeks? Can't remember. We've had a lot of things going on. Well, I'm sorry, Board Liaison, any of that. Anybody have anything?
I attended the vocal concert at Two Hill about, was it almost a week ago now? Chris and I both did, and Dr. Marty. And it was fantastic. Their voices, I mean, those kids just sing. They gave me chills, I laughed, I had tears. It was just amazing. So I am so grateful that we are able to attend those kind of events.
They even used kazooz.
Kazooz, yeah.
I had the pleasure of talking with one of the Boy Scout troops. They wanted to talk with an elected official as one of their citizenship requirements to become first class. So I met with them and just a shout out to all the Boy Scouts who participated in the Veterans Day celebrations today, as well as all the other students today that participated in those. It was a very rewarding experience for them, so we're happy that they were participated.
I attended the Parkway Safety Network meeting where we talked about a whole plethora of issues out there, but we got an update on some of the improvements with regards to security that were part of the bond issuance. Talked a little bit about Westlake landfill, some other issues with regards to SRO involvement and that, but it was a safe place, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, they changed the thing. But it's great because we really do have some community engagement with a lot of parents and stuff too, so.
I attended the Veterans Day program at Craig today, and it was absolutely delightful. What was so delightful about it, we had a number of veterans there, the school did, that is, and their families as well. And what was most enjoyable is the students did a video, and there were pictures of their relative, whether it be their father, or grandfather, or another relative, and they basically introduced them and spoke about them as well. The fifth grade class also talked about veterans and why we appreciate them so much. And every student had an opportunity to express what they wanted to say. And while the theme was pretty much the same, it was really incredible in terms of how they themselves expressed it. And it was very moving. Of course, the choir sang and the entire student body was there, and the entire student body was just mesmerized with just the whole concept of the veterans and what they do and why we appreciate them so much. And it ended in a wonderful breakfast for everyone.
Why don't you talk about, I do have it on here. Just wanted to mention that we had, the board had a PNEA Communications Lab, and we didn't actually identify the issues that night that we're going to be working on together with the PNEA and the administration, but there was a lot of interaction, a lot of fun. It was done in a fun way so that we learned a lot about the different issues and the things that are important to us. And I would just say, everybody came away feeling much more like a team. We always felt like a team, but even more so, I think, after this. I wanted to mention too that earlier this week, Dr. Marty and I attended the Rams Training Facility out in the valley. It was an opportunity there where many of our PE instructors and other teachers were there, and a bunch of students too. It was just leaders from some of the different schools. It was about wellness and how we accomplished that in Parkway. And it was neat too, there was a $10,000 grant from the Midwest Dairy Association, and I took Dr. Marty's picture with Rampage and one of the cheerleaders, he did not reciprocate, so I don't have a picture of myself. But I'm glad that he got to have that experience. Also, not this last week, but the week before, there was a unique event that was held at Central High School. I ran into Desi there. It was the Social Studies Exhibition, and if you haven't attended one of those before, it completely filled the gymnasium and spilled out into the hallway there. And then there was a living history thing down in the commons area. I got, I went down there and investigated the soothsayers, and they told me a few things that I didn't know was going to happen. But what was interesting was to stop and talk to some of the kids, and I learned about the Snake Rebellion and a few things that I had no knowledge of, and these kids really knew, and they had to put it onto cardboard there, posters, and really, and they were anxious when you, if you pause just for a minute, then they wanted to start talking to you about their project. It was really wonderful and nice. Also attended a Mayor's and City Administrator's Special Meeting that we had Tuesday, and I think there was a lot of good things shared there, but I think one of the really nice things was the listening group that we had with them. And they actually had a lot of things to say about Parkway, a very, very good contribution from city administrators. And I did want to mention finally just the, I went to four different veterans assemblies, echo the same things that Sam said. Kids are really sincere and honoring those people that have given time and effort and so much more in sacrifices. And it was nice to be able to meet them and have them, and sincerely, they really feel appreciation. At one of the schools, they lined all of us veterans up, and then the kids would come by and shake their hand and tell us thank you for our service. I'll never forget one little kid grabbed my hand and he just pumped it and looked up at me and said, "Thanks for killing all the bad guys." I told him, I try to avoid the bad guys. Anyway, great district and some great activities out there. 10.04, upcoming subcommittee meetings. There are none. Project Parkway though, I want to remind people about that. It's coming up this next Monday, the 16th. Great meeting. It'll be even one of the better meetings that we've had. Ray McNulty will be there to speak to the public. So as many people that can get there will really feel that they've had a great benefit by being there to hear some of the things that he can say about education and that can be a benefit to us in Parkway. So put that on your calendar if you can, 7:00 PM. It's at Parkway West High School this next Monday. 11.0, action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented here on November 11th, 2015, board materials?
So moved.
Is there anything to be pulled to action?
Yes, I would like to pull Action 11.15, please.
11.15?
Correct.
And then, may I have an all in favor on all of the action items except 11.15? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then those action items carry a 7-0. And 11.15, that's the approval of the K-12 Math Curriculum Framework. So maybe we can get Jennifer, and I'm sorry, when you were doing your recognitions up there, we didn't say your name, and I feel bad about that. All right, I think Debbie, you have some questions.
Explain some of what's going on with the math curriculum. It looks like there's some new programs being added. There are some new classes being added. There's some classes that are being removed. And at West High School, there is a new class that's being added, but it's only being taught- but it's only being taught at West High. So, it would be nice to get an explanation on that.
So, I'll let Jenny answer the specifics about math. But I want to just give an overview of courses at the high schools. And each year, as we go through and look at any changes that have happened in standards, and as you know, in Missouri, we've had multiple sets of standards over the last several years. And we're embarking on another set of standards for, not next year, but the following year if the State School Board approves them. So, as we continue to monitor our data and what standards our students are achieving, which ones we would like them to achieve higher than what they are, there is a course proposal process where teachers or administrators can propose that courses be added or deleted based on interest of students, enrollment, and alignment to standards. So, the process of adding and deleting classes is a yearly process that we go through. And what we look at is to ensure that they still align with the board-approved framework or the board-approved standards, because there's a lot of different ways to get to the same standard. So, that process is a yearly process. Now, for specific answers about the math courses that have changed, that are highlighted in this, I'll let Jenny speak to those.
So, first, the math course that you're talking about at West High is Introduction to Calculus. That's actually not a new course. That's been a course at West High for the last several years. That was before I was a coordinator that that one got in, but it was when we made the change from Math Analysis to Precalculus. That course was added to meet some specific needs of students at West High School. All the schools were given the option to teach that course, but West High was the one that really kind of took it and moved it forward. It actually turns out this year, it's not even being offered. There weren't any students who opted to take that course because of the addition of College Algebra last year. So, that's been traditionally a course only at that school. It's not uncommon that we have, like, Japanese is only taught at South High. So, that's kind of where that one falls in. As to the courses that were changing, last year, we added College Algebra because we saw that as a need for many students going to college. That was the first course that they would take. We found out that we could offer it for college credit, and so that's why we added that. With that, we knew there was going to be a shift in our electives. And so, that's where you're seeing the changes being made, because kids are now going to opt for that rather than for some of our other electives. So, the two that it's going to really affect the most are College Prep Math and Finite, because that's the population of students who are going to be moving over to that. So, what we wanted to do is we wanted to look at what was the good stuff in that curriculum that we wanted to retain to give as options for students. And so, it turned out that between those two courses, they had a common semester of Statistics. And so, what we did is we just pulled that out now as its own course, Statistics. We really like that option because we have a year-long AP Statistics course. But again, when we look at what students take when they go to college, it's either in the Calculus track, College Algebra, or Statistics. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were giving that option to as many students as we possibly could. And so, we're thinking that it'll be a regular-track kid. It could be kids who are in Calculus who just want a semester course, you know, really like math, that it would be good for them. With that, then, what was also in the College Prep curriculum was Trigonometry. And we didn't want to lose that for kids who were in that, who had only taken Algebra II rather than Algebra II with Trigonometry. So, that's why you see that as an addition of an additional semester course. And then with that, we're looking out into the future, then. That Finite, then, numbers have really been dwindling in that course also. So, we're looking forward to, not next year, but the year after, adding an additional course called Problem-Based Applications in Mathematics, which should all be a problem-based class. It will retain some of those Finite topics, which are business math topics, finance topics, and then a couple of other things. Also, you probably saw in there, too, we're adding Calculus III due to acceleration at the middle school. We had kids who were actually maxing out a junior year. And so, Calculus III was the recommendation so that kids could finish the Calculus track. So, next year, we will be adding Calculus III to the curriculum also.
And how does the math curriculum get incorporated with some of the other courses? Because I hear a lot in education about that being so important, that what they're doing in science or what they might be doing in art is incorporating math along with it.
So, as much as we are challenged by the changes that could be coming to us from the Missouri State Department with our standards, it actually provides us a perfect storm where we need to, starting in the spring, whenever the new standards are approved, we need to reevaluate ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies between the time they're adopted and May of next school year. We typically don't evaluate that many curriculums at one time. So, it's actually going to give us the perfect conditions to look at the alignment between that. That was also one of the goals of the TLA redesign. So, by Jenny being the coordinator for Science and Math at the high school, she's looking at that articulation. So, if they're taking Physics here, what math do they need to have prior to Physics or at the same time of Physics? Becky's looking at the same thing at middle school. And then the elementary team is actually going to come together and truly work on that interdisciplinary work, because we're going to need to look at all four curriculum areas at the same time. So, that is part of what Becky and Jenny are doing already as we begin to look forward, is that how do those Science and Math classes stack together? But I think we need to even go broader than that. What's the science in our arts classes? You know, what's the science in our music courses? What's, you know, we need to look, what's the math in Music? What's the math in Art? What's the math in Social Studies? And so, that will be part of what we'll be able to do with this audit of all those curriculum areas because of state standards changing.
And when is that audit taking place again, you say?
So, it is anticipated that the State Board of Education will approve the new standards that are coming out of House Bill 1490 in March or April. And then, from the time they approve it, we will have a year to revise and bring any curriculum forward to you. And then, it will actually be incorporated. We will be tested over those new standards in spring of '18.
Okay. And then, as far as looking at new textbooks and materials, is that the next phase of all of this, or are you using the same material?
So, they can each talk about where they are individually. We actually started looking at materials last year, knowing that to adopt Math, K-12, at one time is not feasible within our curriculum budget. So, we stack it over a couple of years. Jenny had some courses a couple of years ago that the textbooks were outdated, or we added courses, AP, some things changed in AP. So, she's been getting some books over the past couple of years that you have approved. Last year, you approved for Becky to go ahead and purchase the Discovery Math. We moved quicker on middle school because we had been hearing from our middle school teachers very loudly that they needed more resources. And it was, it was an accurate need. Their resources were very old. So, we're kind of staggering them. Elementary, if you'll remember, they piloted a couple of programs last year, and they were not completely satisfied. And so, they're continuing the pilot now. We had a parent affair earlier this fall where parents and teachers were invited to come in and look at materials to help us decide what to pilot. So, they're each at different stages. But that is, we're hoping to finish up elementary this year. And Jenny, you have a few more high school classes that you're looking at, right?
We have, yeah, a few high school classes we're doing this year, and then we're going to ask for additional budget money next year to then finish out the classes that we have. So, right now, we're looking at Algebra I, Algebra II. We've already purchased an Honors Algebra II Trig, so AP Stats and a couple others.
Okay.
Elementary resource adoption is on track to be completed, well, with your approval, January, at the January 13th meeting. So, during the month of December, the elementary team will come to a decision, and we'll bring that to you for the January 13th meeting.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good work. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approved the K-12 Math Curriculum Framework for full implementation beginning in the 2016-17 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. And we are now ready for Mr. Kevin Beckner to help us understand the curious numbers in Achievement Reports.
Well, thank you, President Jacob, and Vice President Mogerman, Dr. Marty, members of the board. I can see the twinkle in your eye as you were playing with the Spheros in anticipation, I'm sure, of the Achievement Report. It had nothing to do with the Spheroes, I'm sure. So, thank you for the opportunity to present our annual Achievement Report. We do have in Missouri five areas that we look at that make up our state accountability system. And we will look at each of those areas during our time. That includes our overall state assessment results, subgroup achievement, college and career readiness, our graduation rate, and our attendance rate. A piece, and there are many pieces to celebrate, but one of the overarching pieces is that, given all of these five areas combined, Parkway earned 98.6% of possible points in the state accountability system, putting Parkway within the top 10 districts among large districts in the state of Missouri. So, that's certainly something to celebrate in terms of our overall achievement. I know you're also anxiously awaiting a year that I can stand here and share with you that there are no changes and that everything is totally the same, and we understand everything. And I cannot oblige, because we are in certainly a period of change within our state system. So, we're going to start with overall achievement. And we know that all of this is occurring within the lens of our mission and vision, making sure that on top of the state accountability system, we're also looking at what are we doing for our students? And how are we making sure that our students are going to leave us capable, curious, and confident? So, here we have our overall scores in each of our four content areas. And I want to point out some of our changes for this year. One, you'll notice that the line looks weird because English and Math, the line is broken. And English and Math, the line is broken because the 2015 test cannot be directly compared to prior years. We know that the tests this year were assessing new standards, the Missouri Learning Standards, and as such, cannot be directly compared to those. And we also know there was another big change that impacted not only English and Math, but Science as well, in that said, all grade-level tests moved online. So, grades three through eight had online testing for the first time last year. Our high school end-of-course exams, as we know, have been online since 2010. There was also, even though we haven't touched Social Studies, a fairly significant change in Social Studies as well in terms of these numbers, because the American History scores that had been added over the last couple of years have been removed from previous year's data, since it's no longer a test that's being given. So, even our Social Studies line only reflects now the government end-of-course exam, not the American History and end-of-course exam. We also see here, on the top is our Parkway scores. On the bottom is our state scores. So, we can see that Parkway continues to outperform the state in English and Math. Going along with our trend of changes, we know that it's difficult to compare how we did, given that it is a new test this year, and we can't draw a nice line. Knowing that we can't draw a nice line, I'm going to go ahead and draw a line anyway so that we can see what that, what that looks like. There they are. So, one of the things that we can notice is that the state experienced a very significant drop in mathematics from last year. So, while we experienced a decline in math performance as well, we certainly have to note the many changes that took place, being aligned with new standards, having new assessments, being online. So, these are certainly things to celebrate. And with English, we see that across the state, scores in English went down, while Parkway scores actually increased. So, the difference between Parkway student scores and scores of all students across the state actually increased, which is certainly something to celebrate. We know that we have some other trends that we've been watching as well that also experienced some interesting changes this year. Last year, I shared with you our gender gap information between our male and female students. We'll start on the right-hand side. For the first time, we saw our female students performing at the same level as our male students in Social Studies. We also saw the lines in Science cross for the first time, where our female students outperformed our male students. We did not see as much change on our English and Math. Within, still, we see a very large achievement gap between our male and female students in English and a much smaller gap in mathematics. Here are end-of-course exam scores for Algebra I and English II. As with our grade-level tests, the Algebra I was a new test, and the English II was a new test as well. And so, it can't be compared directly to previous years. However, it's still helpful for us to see perhaps how that difficulty level of the test fell and what might have been some impact of those changes, and that's what you see there. After several years of flux in our Biology and of-course exams, we finally did achieve some stability where the test didn't change dramatically from year to year. So, those scores did remain relatively stable. And with our government end-of-course exam, they also stayed very close. A very small drop in our government's scores, but very close to what they've been in previous years as well. So, switching from our state assessment, where we have lots to celebrate, to our subgroup achievement, we know that this is where we have work to do. We can celebrate our 98.6, celebrate our high achievement, celebrate that our students continue to outperform the states at high levels. But we know that our mission is for all, and that we want to make sure that all of our students are achieving at high levels. In that regard, we have some things to show. So, in terms of where the targets are, in all four content areas, they fall sort of in that score range that you see there. On the top, we'll see our students who are not in the state's subgroup, the student gap group. On the bottom, we'll see our students who are in that group. So, we know we're all on the same page. The state refers to the student gap group or super-subgroup as any student who identifies as Black or Hispanic, any student who receives an IEP, any student who receives free reduced lunch, or any student who receives English Language Learner Services. So, any of those groups. So, on the left, we see Science and Social Studies, on the right, English and Math. Unfortunately, there, we see some very big differences between these groups. So, on the top, our students who are not in any of those groups, and our students who are in at least one of those groups are on the bottom. So, obviously, here, this is where we have our achievement gap. And this is where we are really trying to close that gap. With all the changes this year, we also know that we're having to pay close attention to this. So, let's draw some more lines, even though we're not supposed to draw lines so that we can kind of see this difference. Here's one of the big concerns that we're really looking at this year with the new assessments, and that's, you see the lines on the bottom are going down, the lines on the top are going up. That's a challenge for us, because it means, even though the test can't be directly compared, we can say objectively, the gap between our groups of students actually increased with the new tests this year in English and Math. You'll notice that that gap actually didn't increase as much in Science and Social Studies. In fact, not at all in Social Studies, it actually closed a little bit. But we did see that increase in English and Math. Want to see, though, is that a Parkway issue or is that a state issue? Is that other districts? It is not a Parkway issue only. It's a Parkway issue, but it's not a Parkway issue only. So, here we see Parkway's total and the state total. And we're using math as an example in this case. Here we see our subgroup totals for, in Math, for both the state and for Parkway. When we draw these lines again, there, we see the increased difference between those two groups. We also see that increase happen across the state. To make sure, the state's a big comparison, so to make sure that this really wasn't a very specific Parkway problem, we also pull five comparable districts from across the state and all of their scores. Look at them as well. Two districts from the St. Louis area, three districts from across the state in the Kansas City area, and saw very similar trends. That's what we're seeing. Which leads us to conclude that it might be, the questions are on the new test, perhaps something involved with increased use of technology. We're really hypothesizing at this point, but we're trying to make sense of that so we can do our best to close that gap and find out what the issues might be. In terms of all four content areas, students in Parkway's subgroup did outperform the state in each of the four content areas, with the largest difference happening in math, where Parkway students in that group outperformed state students also in that group by 13% in terms of proficiency. Now, let's turn to College and Career Readiness, and we'll look at our ACT information and our Advanced Placement tests, as well as our dual-credit information. This year, Parkway's composite score was a 22.9, a little over a point higher than the state's and almost three points higher than the national average. That was a slight decline from the class of 2014, slightly higher than the class of 13. We also know that we're watching our students who, how many tests they take and how those students perform. As with prior years, we do see about a third of our graduating class take only the junior test. This past year was the first time the junior test was offered across the state, so Parkway was not one of the only school districts providing that to all juniors. Beginning next year, numbers from the junior ACT will be in all district scores, since the graduate ACT is the official ACT score. One of the things we're also paying close attention to is that we know that students who take only one ACT test perform much lower than students who take two or more. So, we're looking for opportunities to make sure that our students have access and make sure that they're experiencing ACT more than once so that they can have more doors open to them potentially and increase their score so that they have more opportunities as they graduate and go on to their next endeavors. I'm going to show you the ACT series by graduating class. And unfortunately, this is the last year I'll be able to show this, because ACT discontinued the Explore Test and the Plan Test. So, the class of 2016 is the last class where we can watch this trend over time. So, there we see our Explore scores, then our Plan scores. By the time we get to our Plan scores, the trends really solidify themselves. And we see, we can follow that into their graduate ACT score. So, we saw that with the class of 15, you notice that there was a decline from the class of 14. That is ultimately what we ended up seeing with that graduate ACT score is a slight decline. You also noticed that the 2016 junior class score is higher than the class of 15, so we are anticipating to see a bit of an increase next year. we are anticipating to see a bit of an increase next year in our graduate ACT score as we watch this cohort go through.
Would you mind explaining what Explore and Plan are?
Yeah, absolutely. This is the, the series of tests that lead up to the ACT, they're produced actually by ACT. So Explore is the test that students would have taken in eighth grade. Plan is the test that students would have taken in 10th grade. Then we, of course, give, have given our junior ACT now for six years, so we have, that's the next lineup. So we've been able to watch our students' trends over time. Beginning last year, ACT discontinued both the Explore and the Plan. So they're no longer an option for us to purchase and use, and that's why we won't be able to continue to watch this trend moving forward.
And is that what Aspire is called now?
Exactly.
Eighth grade instead of Explore?
They transferred all of their emphasis and effort onto the Aspire and discontinued the Explore. And there are some, some fairly significant differences between Explore and Plan and Aspire, namely, Aspire is actually for any grade level, all the way down to third grade, whereas Explore was eighth grade only, and Plan was 10th grade only. So there are some, some fairly significant differences between the two, but ACT made the decision to switch their emphasis to Aspire and stop using the Explore and the Plan.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. We also can look at each subtest for the ACT, and here we see the trend line for the last several classes. So here we see that last year's graduating class actually experienced a slight decrease in each of the content areas. It wasn't any one area in particular that they increased and decreased in others, it was in all four of the content areas. Just with our state testing, we know that we also have an achievement gap with our ACT data. So when we look at that by ethnicity provided by ACT, we do see some of those same achievement gaps that we're seeing in our state data and in our local data, gaps that we really want to close, and we want all students achieving at a high level. One of the other indicators that ACT gives us, besides the composite score and the subscores, is also, how many students are leaving prepared for college in all four content areas? They call those their college readiness benchmarks. Parkway, in Parkway, 40% of students are meeting that college readiness benchmark, where in the state, it's 30%. We did see, as with our composite dropping, we saw a slight decline in our percent of students leaving with all four content areas, having achieved that college and career readiness benchmark, but 40% is obviously a strong number that outpaces students from across the state. Again, particularly strong, given that this data still includes for Parkway all students, whereas across the state, it is only students who self-select. Turning to AP exams, we have kids take a lot of AP exams. We had over 900 students participate in AP exams. Those 900 students took almost 1,700 tests, and in taking those tests, 82% of them scored a three, four, or five, which are the scores typically required to get college credit. We also see our long-term trend of more and more students taking AP exams and increasing our participation, not just the number of tests being taken. We also know that in this area too, that we are trying to increase AP participation for all groups. Here we see our difference in terms of the student population versus the population of AP test takers. So we do see that we have some groups of students who are underrepresented in terms of AP test takers, and we have other groups of students that are overrepresented. We have obviously many initiatives going on in Parkway to try to address these things and make sure that our students are being challenged to participate in the highest level class that they can possibly participate. In addition to AP, we have a ton of students taking dual credit classes and attempting to earn credit while in high school. We heard Jenny Profit explain a minute ago that college algebra is another class where students can participate in dual credit. Last year's graduating class had about 65% of students attempt at least one dual credit class. This year, that number actually increased to 72%. 72% of Parkway graduates attempted at least one dual credit class, which is obviously a significant number and something to celebrate. We also need to look at our attendance and graduation rates. In terms of our percent of students achieving at least 90%, which is the state target, we had in 2015, 91.5% of our students reached that 90% mark, which is a slight decline from last year, but above the previous three years before that. So we continue to stay at least a percent, percent and a half above that state target. And then in terms of our graduation rate, here we see our four-year graduation rate. The state target is 92%. And then we see our five and six-year graduation rates. The state uses the highest of, so we remain well above the state target of 92% in terms of our graduation rate as well. So in terms of our five areas, we saw state assessment, subgroup achievement, graduation rate, college and career readiness, and our attendance, and I will now be happy to take any questions that you might have.
How often do they change the ACT? I wonder if some of the fluctuations in scores could come from something other than students' readiness for the exam, if the line of questioning has changed or something has changed. And following up is, how do we compare nationally?
Great question. We saw the national average was 21 this year, and so our composite of 22.9, you know, was above the national average. In terms of how often they change the test, ACT is in the process of gradual change, and one of their taglines is gradual change without the need for any radical, radical movements. But typically, they do, if you were to take multiple ACT assessments, you're not going to be experiences, experiencing the same assessment because it's drawing on different questions and very large item banks and things like that. Every few years, they do retire a version of the test and bring in a new version of the test. So every few years, you can expect that churn, where they'll say, all of these items are now leaving the item bank and will bring in new items. Our students typically experience field test items during the test, where they'll have some questions that, they don't know which ones they are, but they're not being included in their score because they're, they're testing out those items and making sure those items work. So there, to answer your question, every test is different, and there is fluctuation in those, but we're not experiencing with ACT massive overhaul. We know that only about 10% of our students participate in the SAT. The SAT is experiencing massive overhaul.
Are they becoming more like the ACT?
They are. Yeah, typically, the SAT is an aptitude test, so it's not directly assessing the things that you were supposed to learn in a classroom at school. It's assessing your aptitude to potentially do well in college, whereas ACT has always been geared toward, we're going to try to assess the things that you should have learned. And so ACT is, sorry, SAT is making that shift to be more like ACT in that regard. That's why you see some things like the anagrams are going away for the SAT. The, they're really focusing on like words people use, not memorizing flashcards of obscure words. Not to like bash the, we're not here to bash the ACT, but they're openly saying that. We were assessing obscure words, and we're going to stop doing that. And that's always what ACT has been trying to do, is what are kids really learning, and let's see if they're learning at the level they're expected to.
I guess, I didn't, I didn't state my question well about the na, how we compare nationally. Are ebbs and flows, do they correspond nationally?
Good question. Generally speaking, we're, and I'm going to talk all Nathan Tyson to you for a second. Large sample sizes are very steady, right? So when you're talking about Parkway and a graduating class of 1,200 students, we're going to see a lot more variation in our scores than you're going to see when you have 20 million scores in it. So the answer would be no, but I don't know that that's because something weird is happening in Parkway. I think we have such a very large sample across the nation that typically, the national score, over the last five to seven years, it has never changed more than a tenth of a point in a year. And that's entirely due to the fact that you have so many students taking it that it takes a very large change to move that needle, whereas when we're only talking about a graduating class of 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 students, it doesn't take near as much to move that variation. How did I do, Nathan? Thank you.
Thank you.
With regards, we've always been concerned as a board with the gap between our subgroups and, and are there strategies that aren't working? Are there new strategies that are being contemplated? I know Dr. Martin and I talked about one in particular that grabs a few students and works with them to, and so I didn't know if, you know, what strategies are we really implying, applying, because if we continue to do what we've been doing, then we're going to continue to have a large gap.
We'll get the same results, absolutely. I can speak to how hard and personally, our schools take this issue and really are trying to attack individual students and try to address their learning gaps. We were in our district assessment and progress monitoring meeting on Tuesday, and looking at some of this data specific to the ACT in terms of some of the gaps that we're seeing in different areas. And at one point, I watched an assistant principal at one of our high schools, you know, almost get emotional about it. He said, this is such a complex problem, and we want to solve it. It's just so big and difficult, and they are really trying to throw the kitchen sink at it. As a district, we know that many of our initiatives that we're doing are geared towards helping our students who might not be as engaged. For example, we know we have a big focus right now on engagement. We know that we did a lot of work this summer with the Kagan, Kagan Engagement Strategies in trying to train our teachers with those, in an attempt to attack the issue of, if there is a group of students who's disengaged, we need to work specifically to address this group of students. At the school level, we have our schools really trying to target specifically, what are the needs that are, that are not being met right now? How do we meet those needs? And are really, really working themselves to the bone to try to solve that problem. So I think we have several of those things. I can also speak to, in the department that we're in, in the Teaching, Learning, Accountability Department, Equity and Excellence has been one of our main focuses, where we actually are looking specifically at this issue and making that a priority to try to figure out, what are the things that we might need to do to address this issue? And I don't know if Dr. Meredith wants to speak anymore to that, but that's been a focus to, to try to make sure that we are committed to looking at that information and try to come up with strategies to address that. Is there anything you want to add to that?
So within, within TLA, each coordinator is in a PLC this year, and that is their focus. And so if you happen to visit 1800, I think some of you have been in there for some meetings, and you've seen the charts on the wall. As Kevin talked about, the buildings are working with individual students. Through our work, we're looking at a larger scale. Are there gaps in our curriculum where our students aren't able to access the curriculum, or it doesn't seem relevant to them? Are there strategies that we don't have sample lessons for within our curriculum? So the coordinators in their work are looking more at the system level to try to figure that out. So they've come up with hypotheses, and they're now out in classrooms or digging deeper in data. I know Kevin and the high school team, they are in particularly focusing on the gap on ACT, and so they're actually going in and looking at students who are achieving well, African-American students who are achieving well on ACT, and what sequence of courses have they taken? What, so that, that is part of the work that we're trying to look at, the system, while the buildings are working at the problem solving on the groups of students or individual students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious about the profile of a student in the gap, because we're talking about a lot of curriculum, curriculum as well as strategies to meet their needs, but what is a typical profile of a, of a child who's in the gap?
Yeah, I wish I could tell you there were a typical profile, and that's one of the challenges, is sometimes it's a student with an IEP who has a learning disability in math, and sometimes it's a student who is Hispanic, who identifies as Hispanic, who has no, you know, doesn't have an IEP, doesn't receive free reduced lunch. Those are very different students, and they're lumped together in this group, and that's part of what makes it challenging to, we really can't try to attack that group as a whole, because there are so many different profiles of students that fall into that group. I know how we would address a student who's just learning English is way different than we would try to address a student who maybe has an IEP for behavior disorder or something like that. So in terms of a typical profile, there really isn't one, which is what makes the, the issue so difficult and multifaceted, is we have to be prepared to respond to all of those needs, because they're individual students and they have individual needs. I appreciate the question, the unfortunate thing is, there isn't one, and that's part of why it's so difficult.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing, because it's kind of like a moving target. You know, what do you do? And when you have some students with a certain ability that are achieving, an African-American student who's achieving, and you have another student with similar ability who is not achieving, what, what's the difference there?
That's actually, to Lisa's point, that's one of the things we're trying to find out, is we're part of, I can only speak to the work that we're doing in the high school team in TLA, we're actually trying to go talk to the people who work most closely with those students who are being successful and ask, what's the difference? You know, really, help us understand, what's the difference here? And we're starting to see some trends emerge, not enough to really be able to say, here's, here's the thing, but for example, just being engaged in the school community. Like they had a sport or an activity or a person who they really engaged with, that's, that's fairly typical of some of the students who, when we talk to the counselors and the people who work most closely that we're seeing, but I don't think that's a silver bullet either, it's just, it's one of those things that's starting to emerge. So we're trying to ask that very thing, is, what's the difference? Help us understand, let's find, follow those bright spots. You know, follow the bright spots and see if we can figure out, is there something that we can learn from here?
Yeah.
I remember Ray McNulty saying that probably the biggest contributor to a student's success is how they feel about themselves, rather than the size of the class or the teacher. All of those things are important, the curriculum, but if he doesn't feel good about himself or her, then they don't get engaged. So I don't know if that's something that we can.
I hear Dr. Watson cheering behind us.
Goal three, next one. Stay tuned for goal three.
Stay tuned for goal three, that's, that's, that really is how the goals are interconnected, is, that's right. We, a student might not be learning in class, not because we have the wrong strategies, but because there's something else going on socially, emotionally with that student that we need to help work on as well.
One of the other things I, I didn't see in this report, maybe you have stats on it, is the number of students who are getting tutoring, and who's getting tutoring? And might it be that some of the children that are not succeeding are not getting tutoring, but the students who are succeeding are getting tutoring?
That's a good question.
So that would be an interesting thing to put into a report.
What we don't have is students who might be getting private tutoring, and we might not have access to that information. And I would have to defer to Lisa again too, just on the Title I information, because she knows much more about that as well.
So as I spoke about TLA and our work, the customized learning team is actually doing work to go in and look at our interventions that are in place, all the way from our ESOL interventions, our gifted interventions, our reading interventions, to determine the impact that the different interventions are. So not even just kids in general who are in intervention, but all the way down to specific interventions. How long are they in them? How much growth have they had so that we can evaluate that? We typically see that type of analysis within the program evaluation for the content areas where the interventions take place, but it is something we're trying to do a better job of monitoring value added from being in those interventions. We need them to grow at a faster rate. But so much of that, and I know John, I met with customized learning team this morning, and particularly at high school, we're looking at, you know, if students are coming in not reading on grade level, to what Chris talked about, what's their narrative about what they believe in themselves as a learner? And so sometimes they might be in reading intervention, but it's also reading intervention plus social, emotional intervention of how to help them believe in themselves so that they'll take the risks and be okay with the approximations that we all make as learners. So that's not necessarily in this report, but it is something the customized learning team is looking at, how can we monitor that closer so that we can pivot, if we need to pivot, with what we're offering for interventions?
The only other question that I had too was on, with all, with taking all the different level of ACTs, it looks like we're taking four different levels of ACT, eighth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. And do you have statistics that show how a student does later on when they take it in eighth grade, for example, because it seems like, it seems like we're testing our kids a lot and wondering if it's making a difference?
In terms of watching, so a student had X score in eighth grade, did that make any difference for them in 10th grade?
Precisely, in 11th grade and in 12th grade, and then eventually getting into college.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that's really a difficult piece for us in education is we can see trends happening, and we do see that, where we can watch a student, here was their score here, and here was two years later, and here it was two years later. And our challenge is actually to break that trend. Like we don't want many of those trends to happen, when we see a student who they might have been low performing here in eighth grade, then we do it again two years later, and we see that they're still low performing. Our goal is to make it so that that actually doesn't happen. We want to make sure it's not predictive in those cases. What I can tell you is, I, and I moved through all this obviously very quickly, but we do see that unfortunate trend happen, where we say, in general students, when they score here in eighth grade, we can say there's a very good likelihood that here's where they're going to score, you know, three years later, and it, it's our charge to figure out, so why weren't we able to break that trend? What courses did they take that might have helped them or not helped them, as the case may be? What might we have done differently? And so it does look like there's a lot, but in many of the cases with the ACT series, they're spread years apart so that we can try to get that long-term picture of what's happening. And we do that so that we can have this very conversation. So when we see a class coming through that is performing higher, that's great. But then what do we do when we have a class that's performing lower? How do we make sure that doesn't repeat itself over and over again? So that we can, but we do see that happen, yes. Where we see if the score is here on the plan test in 10th grade, two years later, when their graduate ACT comes in, it's probably going to be in this range.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any others? Thank you again, Kevin.
I'll bring Spiros next time.
Spiros, we'll meet at Spiros.
On Kevin. I think that's what he said, right?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Dr. Tyson, we've been waiting all night for you. What can you tell us about food?
It is always a pleasure to be with you all. President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, Board of Directors, Dr. Keith Marty, Mrs. Stover, thank you. We are here to have our preliminary conversation for food service. And I wanted to get everyone thinking about food and cooking and good tasting food. So we're going to go ahead and just open with, it's just a brief skit here on the screen.
TMB, a new sketch series premieres Tuesday, January 3, 1st at 10:30, Olin.
All right. So I'm hoping that that gets us thinking about Chef Dan and food services and all the great food that's being made for the students here in Parkway. And I'm going to go ahead and we're just going to roll through our main topics and guiding questions. We had a food services program evaluation team come together. So I want to thank all of these fine members and groups of members that we have on the screen. And I'll get started. Here we go. So the main topics for this program evaluation, quality, participation, communication, facilities, staff retention and training, and then future best practice, looking specifically at centralized scratch cooking. And remember, as we're going through this, this is a work session. So right now, we're just, this is what we're proposing that we study. And then your feedback will be very welcome at the end and we'll be sure to build that into the overall study. So the main topic number one is quality, the guiding questions. Is the food we serve nutritious? Do students find the food to be visually appealing and tasty? Do families think our meals are affordable? If not, how do we make meals more affordable? Continuing with quality, are the allergens contained in our food appropriately disclosed? And is this information accessible to community members? Should we reduce the use of common allergens in our food? If so, how can we do it? And are we in compliance with TESI rules and regulations? Main topic number two, participation in the program. What is our participation in food services in the program? How might we increase participation? What barriers prevent students from participating? How do we access parents, students, and staff feedback relative to participation in the food service program? And continuing with participation, should the district offer an affordable staff catering menu? Would such a thing be possible? Do vending machines and/or competing sales affect participation? And should the payment process be adjusted and should different payment methods be considered? Oh, this is just to break up the monotony, so Barry devises a way to get two lunches. Main topic number three, communication. How might we better market the Parkway School Lunch? How do we increase two-way communication with stakeholders? And how do we respond to suggestions from our school community? And how should we respond? Continuing with communication, does the food service signage need to be improved at any of our school sites? How can we better communicate the nutritional value of our food? How can we better communicate our healthy menu planning process? How can we be more, how can we more effectively reach out to families who qualify for free and reduced lunch prices for that program, specifically targeting those families that need to reapply? So they've been part of it before and they need to reapply. Last slide for communication, how can we use 21st century technology to communicate with stakeholders? And how do we change the perception of the school lunch? Facilities is main topic number four. Should we increase onsite cooking? If so, how? Should we increase cafe size so that more students can eat lunch during a given lunch shift? And is there a need to increase food service facilities, such as the number of freezers, the number of electrical outlets, physical space, square footage? Continuing with facilities, how do we develop a more appealing atmosphere in our cafeterias? Are students provided with an appropriate length of time to eat lunch? Never declare a food fight on artichoke day. In this one, I particularly like that kid up in the left hand that's clearly knocked out. Well, that's an artichoke that, yeah, I think penetrated the skin. Staff retention and training, main topic number five. And that was the last one. That's, that's it. This one's a quick one. Do food service staff members feel like they are part of the school community? Is food service staff training timely and accessible? And is the current staffing structure meeting the needs of the food services department? And then finally, a look to future best practice and specifically with a focus on centralized scratch cooking. Should Parkway plan to make a move to centralized scratch cooking? So then all of the questions that sort of fell under centralized scratch cooking and what would we need to investigate if this is something we'd be serious about moving forward with? Do we have an existing location or would we need to build? Would it be cost-effective? Could it increase participation? Would it help encourage students to have healthy habits? Would it improve classroom productivity? Can we ensure the elimination of allergen contamination this way? Could we involve students in the food production process? Might we reduce food waste this way? And then one other question that we wanted to ask as we thought about future best practice was, is the snack backpack program worthy of possible implementation in Parkway? And would it be feasible? And that is all. So we are very interested in thoughts that you all have about food services. Do you think we've, you know, are we in the right direction here? Are these the things that you would expect us to be studying? Or are we missing something?
Well, the comedy was great, but where's the food?
You know, and that I leave up to Marlene, so. You know what, though? I, there might be something in for you when she comes down for her report.
Okay.
What was the last one with the snack backpack?
What is that?
Where's, is Marlene, but, Marlene, why don't you come up here and just tell them real quickly?
I'm sorry, I know we're not supposed to be asking.
No, 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 this is, actually, this is okay, yeah.
The backpack, it is in some of our schools like Craig Elementary. And what they do is they actually have a group of, it can be parents or volunteers that do backpacks for the weekends for those students that won't have meals.
So it's not really snacks, it's meals?
It's meals, it can be.
For the weekend?
Yeah, for the weekend.
Got it.